Very happy to see a terrific crowd here tonight to see our Woodstock City Council Candidates Forum. You know, we really appreciate seeing people that are involved in local policy and local issues and coming to an event like this because as we know, elections matter and who we elect to office matters. So, you know, it takes courage to enter the political arena, really, at any level, and we appreciate the candidates taking time to join us here on stage so that they can let us know what they think about our local issues here in Woodstock. I will take a quick note that we have seven of the nine candidates who are going to be on your ballot this April 4th. Wendy Barker was traveling and not able to join us, and we got a late notice that Crystal Squires is sick, and so unfortunately, I could not be here this evening. So, I'd like to make a couple of quick thank yous before we bring the candidates out. The Woodstock Opera House, thank you all very much for hosting us this evening. They have a terrific team here. We absolutely love doing programs and events here. It's a huge value add to the community and a great place on the square. So, thank you very much to the Woodstock Opera House. Yes, definitely. Thank you.[66.40][66.40](APPLAUSE). I'd also like to thank our videographer, Dan from 400 Feet and Below Photography. He is donating his services here tonight. We'll have the video recording. We'll post that probably tomorrow. We've done a bunch of projects with Dan over the last handful of years, and they've always been great. He does terrific work, so I would invite you to check out his service. 400 Feet and Below Photography, he does both photo and video, so you can find him online and on social. So, we're going to get started here, so I'm going to invite the candidates on to stage to take their seats. Candidate seating has been arranged alphabetically by last name, so I'm going to start calling people on. Bryson Calvin.[106.21][106.21](APPLAUSE). Darren Flynn.[108.21][108.21](APPLAUSE). Mark Endike.[110.21][110.21](APPLAUSE). Melissa McMahon.[112.21][112.21](APPLAUSE). Joe Starcinski.[114.21][114.21](APPLAUSE). Tom West.[116.21][116.21](APPLAUSE). And Natalie Ziemba.[118.21][118.21](APPLAUSE). And finally, I'd like to introduce our moderator, Larry Law. Larry is editor of The Woodstock Independent for the last five years, but he's lived in Woodstock for the last 20. He has worked for a dozen different newspapers in three states over the last five decades with a special interest in state and local government and politics. We greatly appreciate Larry's time and talent helping to bring tonight's event together. Larry, come on out.[144.22][144.22](APPLAUSE). Larry, the show is yours.
I told the candidates, is this on? I would be introduced to wild applause.[194.73][194.73](LAUGHTER). Mildly disappointing, but that's okay. We're starting with two-minute introductions. We'll finish with a two-minute conclusion. In between times, I'll ask questions and call on the candidates in something of a random order. We're going to do the introductions and the opening statements in alphabetic order, so we'll start with Bryson Calvin.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Before we get into any personal accolades, I'd like to take a moment and wish all the candidates up here on the stage good luck. It is refreshing to know that we have a quality roster of candidates who care deeply about this city and its path into the future. I'd also like to thank Lisa Lohmeyer and Wendy Pierceall for their dedication and four years of service. I am Bryson Calvin, lifelong resident and great-grandson of Thor Emrickson, who set aside the land that so many of us currently enjoy, Emrickson Park. His ambition to preserve land for its intrinsic value as well as for recreational opportunities was certainly passed on to me. I have six years of elected public office experience as a door township trustee. I moved to Greenwood Township this past fall, which is why I did have to step down. But in my time there, we held the levees flat for four years and abated taxes for three out of those four years, and even reduced the levy with an abatement in 2019. I say this as an example to show how fiscally responsible I am with taxpayer dollars. I was a small business owner of Main Street Porthouse, excuse me, from 2013 to 2019, so I'm very in tune with what it takes to keep small businesses successful. Upon my sale of Main Street Porthouse, my fiance, now my beautiful wife, front row, and I crowdfunded, solicited, and held fundraising events for Turning Point and Transitional Living Services in hopes of gaining per-mile pledges or flat-rate donations to walk the Appalachian Trail from Georgia to Maine. There are future hikes in the schedule, maybe not quite as long, but to give back to nonprofits in need. Needless to say, all of us are up here to talk the talk, but my wife and I have literally walked the walk. My focal points for running at a seat on City Council includes roads, recreation, and innovation. While I understand approximately $56 million has been appropriated in August of '21 to resurface 50% to 60% of our roads, we're almost three years past that point, which includes three years of wear and tear, freeze and thaw, salt, and general degradation of our roads. Working with the Public Works and the winning bidder of our road replacement will be paramount to making sure we get this replacement right, and we need to remain vigilant on securing funding through IDOT, seeking federal funds, and other available means of financing to make sure we don't end up in this situation in the future.[371.03][371.03](APPLAUSE).
Darren Flynn.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, Bryson. That was very nice. My name is Darren Flynn, and I have been a resident of Woodstock since 2017. We started a little bit in reverse. We opened our first business in 2016 on the Woodstock Square and immediately felt the warmth and welcoming of the community in Woodstock, and we're absolutely in awe. And so, after we opened our business a year later in 2017, we sold our home in another community and moved to Woodstock. And 2018, we had the pleasure of joining the Chamber of Commerce, becoming very involved, and joining the Board of Directors a year later, or actually, yeah, that same year, and been very involved in many fundraising volunteer opportunities throughout the city of Woodstock and allowed me to get to know a lot of residents and hear a lot of the concerns. And so, when the opportunity came to run for council in 2019, I welcomed it. I also understood the responsibility that came with it. It's still, to this day, almost four years later, when you step behind, when you're in the chamber or in the chambers, and you step behind the desk, you kind of feel the weight of the entire community on your shoulders with every decision that you're making. And I take that very seriously, and I pride myself in the fact that I have looked at every decision that I've made over the last four years to not necessarily pick winners or losers, but to make sure that everyone in Woodstock is being represented and the best thing is happening. I would say in 2019, when I was elected to City Council, 2021, we not only opened our second business on the Woodstock Square, but I was also appointed deputy mayor, and my focus is very much comprehensive planning for the city of Woodstock, making sure that we actually have a playbook by which future councils can help to make decisions for the city of Woodstock. Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.[488.21][488.21](APPLAUSE). Mark Endike.
That's me. I am Mark Endike. I'm going to give you a brief resume of my qualifications. Twenty-three years ago, my wife, Leslie Ann, and I moved to Woodstock. Obviously, we fell in love with the square. At that point in time, that's where people could go to do a lot of their retail shopping. Since then, the square has evolved to the point where it's more of an entertainment venue than a retail establishment that our current residents really want to stay and shop. I have 45 years' experience in the food and beverage management. I was recruited by Lake Geneva Yacht Club to turn the operation around. They were in dire straits, and after a period of time, I showed a profit for the first time in 100 years. I have supervised and managed multimillion-dollar organizations, including a renovation, a million-dollar renovation for a major country club. Upon retirement, at the age of 60, or I thought I was going to retire, Leslie Ann and I opened a small business in Woodstock called Dog and Suds Pet grooming, and because of her expertise, we were very successful and in business for over 12 years. I have over 20 years devoted to civic duties. I was past president of the Woodstock Morning Rotary Club, where we instituted the Great Sports Expo. Brad was part of that operation as well. I am on the Woodstock Fireworks Committee, where we go around and collect money from private owners and businesses to support Woodstock fireworks, which is not funded by the city except for Public Works and Police and Fire Department. I am on the Board of Directors of the Woodstock Moose. We have approximately 1,600 family members. When I joined the Moose eight years ago, it was marginal. We were losing members. We were in danger of losing our liquor license, and as acting administrator and treasurer, we have turned that around to the point where we have over 1,600 members, and the Moose Lodge Lodge is in great shape, where they can donate over $20,000 a year, between $20,000 and $30,000 a year, to local nonprofits and to what we call the heart of community.
Time. Next, Melissa McMahon.
Good evening, and thank you all for caring enough about Woodstock to be here tonight. My name is Melissa McMahon, and I'm excited to be running for City Council. A brief who I am may help you understand why I'm running and why I believe I'd be an asset to the city of Woodstock. I moved to Woodstock in 2007 from Hoffman Estates, where I was born and raised. My two daughters are products of Woodstock Public Schools. My dog is a rescue from Helping Paws. I consciously bought a home built in 1902 with a lot of history, random quirks, and occasional turkeys. We live and breathe Woodstock. When needed, I've been a PTO president, 4-H leader, VBS teacher, and much more. When I see a need, I show up. Years ago, I joined the Groundhog Day Committee and became Woodstock Willie's handler because of the sheer joy that it brought to residents and visitors alike. Long before my employment with the Chamber, I was involved in many events that make Woodstock the hometown that we love. I spent years managing a venue on the square and still have good relationships with my fellow business owners, community groups, and past clients to this day. I'm a proud alum of the first class of Chamber ambassadors. I've served on committees that brought Rock Stock, Ladies Night Out, Lighting of the Square, Witches and Wizards, and so much more to Woodstock. I am a founding member of Woodstock Pride and Pride Fest co-chair with my fellow candidate, Chris Squires. I am the only common link for all three of our Today Show episode features in the last two years. I'm a Parks and Rec Commissioner and excited to make Parks and Rec a larger part of the comprehensive plan. I believe my time spent in these roles have given me a solid foundation to draw from and lends towards a well-rounded council member. I am here to fill a need. I am not afraid of hard or dirty work. I will pull garbage at events and minutes later turn around and talk to the crowd. I don't ask anyone to do anything that I am not willing to do myself. I believe in showing up and getting the work done and have the track record to prove it. I believe intentional strategic growth will be key to Woodstock. I believe a thought-out and well-executed plan for keeping Woodstock alive during the Route 47 expansion is a high priority. I believe the council that works together to balance the feeling of being home and becoming home for others will be the greatest benefit to our residents and visitors, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thanks, Melissa.[801.32][801.32](APPLAUSE). Joe Starcinski.
Hi. Now, it's 32 years of being a resident of Woodstock. My kids grew up here and have since left. Let's see, I work at Home State Bank. I'm a loan officer, and so I've been, you know, my years to the ground, especially to the housing market, it affects me personally, but also I kind of see what, you know, people's housing needs and desires are. I've spent the last 20 years, I did serve on council for four years from 2013 to 2017. It was really good experience, and I want to, I'm interested in continuing it. I've, again, part of the 20, those 20 years, the while, or close 20 years while working at Home State, I think I really focused on community service. So, I became part of the Rotary Club, which I'm still a member of. I was on the Board of the Environmental Defenders, Board of the Ed Foundation. Right now, I'm serving on the Social and Cultural Awareness Commission with Crystal Squires. I'm probably missing some stuff, but I think, I guess, the focus for me, I kind of think of, you know, service or working with the council as just another form of service to the community. I, you know, that's the way I kind of look at it. It's just another method of not only dissemination of information, but also, you know, listening to people, what it is there, because I don't have the, I certainly don't have all the answers. I think it's better to listen to people and find out what it is they feel are the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.[937.63][937.63](APPLAUSE). Tom West.
Hi. My name is Tom West. Thanks to everybody for coming out tonight and being involved. Just a little bit about myself, I'm a former educator, and I moved to Woodstock four years ago with my partner and her two children, who both attend public school here. We were attracted to Woodstock because of its uniqueness and its beautiful natural spaces, and I'm running for City Council this year because I fear that the things that drew us here are now under threat. I have no experience whatsoever in politics, and I believe this is a good thing, given what citizens have seen from their governments lately, both on the local and national levels. Here in Woodstock, within the past couple of years particularly, I've noticed a marked decrease in the maintenance of buildings, parks, and of course, our roads, which are now worse than those of Bosnia in 1993. Or if you prefer a more recent analogy, Ukraine. I feel like there has been a growing negligence on the part of both city officials and city managers regarding crucial infrastructure maintenance, and as a taxpayer, I think that my tax dollars have been and are being wasted on pet pod projects of the current and past mayoral administrations, and I want to be elected to City Council to represent the residents' voices, those of us who live and work here and drive the roads and use the rec center, library, and parks on a daily basis. I care about this town since I've been here. I don't, and I don't want to turn it into yet another cookie cutter suburb, which, you know, some, like Crystal Lake or Algonquin, I'm afraid have turned into. And currently, I believe that that's the direction things are going, letting developers and corporations exploit our people and resources here in Woodstock for their own benefit. And so, I would put the message out to you, and hopefully you agree with me, let's prioritize the people's needs. Thank you very much.[1075.65][1075.65](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Tom. Natalie Ziemba.
Good evening. I returned home late last night after spending four days advocating for and volunteering with the Alzheimer's Association in Washington, DC. It was my fourth year attending the National Alzheimer's Advocacy Forum, and it reinvigorated my penchant for volunteerism and service. In addition to the Alzheimer's Association, which I got involved with almost 10 years ago following my father's diagnosis, I'm an active member of the Rotary Club of Woodstock. In fact, after just a year in the club, I received the Rotarian of the Year Award in 2021. Since then, I've gotten more active on committees within the club itself. When I'm not volunteering with those organizations or as a business incubator program mentor at St. Patrick High School in Chicago, where I taught for seven of my 10 years as a high school English teacher prior to moving to Woodstock in 2019, or working at my full-time job in marketing, you'll find me engaged in conversation at places like Ethereal or Casting Whimsy, chatting with the owners of the backdrop curated by DNA, Wine Stock, Warp Core, Apple Creek Flowers, Ortman's, Wayne's Lanes, Hattie and Mert, or any of our amazing downtown businesses. Or maybe I'm having pizza and a beverage at Sophie's, Your Sister's Tomato, Napoli, or Kingston Lanes. Or perhaps you and I have conversed over chips and salsa at McTeckah. Or maybe you've chatted with me during Queen of Hearts at the Moose, or said hi to me while we were both walking the path at Emrickson. All of this to say, I not only live in Woodstock, but I'm active in Woodstock, be it as a volunteer, as a candidate, or as a conversationalist, or as a patron at any number of our businesses. This is my community, of which I am very proud, and I'm running for City Council to ensure we see continued success and prosperity for both residents and businesses. Thank you.[1208.26][1208.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Natalie. Now, the candidates, we each have one minute to answer the questions I have. Will, I was going to start in, after alphabetical order, in ballot order, but Natalie Ziemba went up last again, so.
I'm not last on the ballot.
Well, when Crystal Squires is not here, you're last on my list here, so. So, let's start with Natalie Ziemba.
Okay.
An inventory of parking spaces in the downtown area suggests there is enough parking within a reasonable walking distance of the square. Not everyone agrees. A member of the City Plan Commission during a discussion last summer of the new wedding and events venue in the old courthouse flatly stated the downtown already has a parking problem. City officials say if there's a problem, it's a problem of perception, which can also discourage people from coming downtown. What is your opinion about the adequacy of downtown parking, and how would you address the problem, whether it's real or perceived?
Perception is reality. Unfortunately, that is what we, as a community, feel. And if the perception is that there is not enough parking, well, how do we deal with that? One is, in the proposal for the diecast site, a planned parking garage that would be multi-story. Would that replace what is the very convenient and free parking provided at the metro lot? We don't really know. It was unclear during the presentation if there would be enough spaces, and of course, we don't know if those would be free. So, where do we put additional parking? Again, if it's perception, which is, I come to the square and there's not parking, or a reality, you might have to drive another block away and park on the street, it is a reality. So, additional parking, although it would be nice to have, I'm not sure we would be able to provide it, one, for free, and, two, we may have to wait a little while for it, which would include that parking garage.
Thank you. Joe Starcinski, your turn.
I do believe it's a matter of perception. I've worked in the bank at, you know, right here on the square, and I've never had a customer ever say that, I mean, we have a little tiny little lot in that, but I've never had anybody say that I had a hard time finding parking on the square. So, you know, I also think maybe it's just a matter of people don't know where all the available spots are when they come into, into the square or into that area of where there is available parking, because there's many times where I see the lot across, on Throop, that's just what used to be, across from what used to be Century Tile, and that's hardly anybody using that. It's not really all that far. So, you know, I didn't, you know, I think there's a lot of people that don't know that there's even, that that lot that's just to the east of MBI, I think a lot of people don't even know that that's a public parking lot that they can use. They think maybe it's private. So, I'm not sure that, you know, that that's, maybe it's just a matter of making people aware where it's available.
Melissa McMahon.
Thank you. As a former venue manager, parking was an issue. It was more of perception. If they didn't have that front row spot, they thought there was no parking. According to the downtown plan, there is actually a total of 1,988 parking spots in downtown Woodstock. You do have to look for them, so signage would be key, and with the branding that's going to be coming out, we are doing a comprehensive branding plan. Parking and where you can find it should be high on that list so that people do know where it is. There is parking spots. You will have to walk a few steps, but it is there.
Bryson Calvin.
Thank you, Larry. As a former business owner, parking on the square in prime hours was challenging. I think most of us know, if any of us has business experience, the old 80/20 rule where 80% of your business operations is, or sales is done in 20% of the time, that creates the problem for parking on the square. There are reasonable parking spaces within walking distance, and 80% of the time, it might be convenient for most people to access some of these businesses, but for the competitiveness on the square for these merchants and these restaurants, it's incredibly difficult to meet your sales margins that you want when parking is definitely an issue. I'm glad to see that Union Place, the old diecast site, has incorporated a parking garage. I rest my time. Thank you, Larry.
Darren Flynn.
Parking is a constant issue, and sometimes it's an issue of actual, there's no parking, because like you said, the 20% rule. If the movie theater is banging and there's lots of stuff going on, there's not a lot of parking. But many times, we've had people come into our business, say, oh, my goodness, I couldn't find a parking place, and you look out the window, and there are four spaces across the street, but it wasn't right in front, so, you know, there we go. But it's a matter of perception. I think that one of the things that we could do better at, as a business community on the square and as a business owner, I think that we need to be more, we need to be parking in the 24-hour lot. All business owners, we need to be parking in the 24-hour lot, so we have room for our customers. And I think that one of the way that, one of the ways that we can do that is, I think that, you know, we should explore permitting, in a sense, so that the police, when they're patrolling, they understand if you're a business owner, you have a permit in your window, and that you need to be in the 24-hour lot, so that that way we can make room for, you know, for the people that are actually coming to the square to shop and to support the local businesses, restaurants, movie theaters, and everything else. And so, you know, and I know that, you know, you run in, you run out, and it's convenience and everything else. I've done it, I've been guilty of doing it, but I think that we have, as Melissa stated, 1,988 parking spaces. We're looking at the addition of the parking structure. We have a lot of parking that, when they did do the parking study, found that a lot of it was underutilized, so wayfaring, wayfinding.
Mark Endike.
Well, I agree that parking is a problem and a perceptive problem. During events, of course, parking is at a premium. People have to park in the metro lot. People have to park down Clay Street, but, and for, of course, the farmer's market and for other events, parking can be a premium. I did question the notion that when the courthouse does their banquets and events, where would people park? And of course, the reasonable answer is on Throop Street, across the street, and the entrance to the courthouse will be on Throop Street. I agree with Darren that, I've had this problem before. If you have an employee who has parked in front of your store for eight hours, then they should be encouraged or even permitted to use public parking space for 24 hours. The diecast site does propose that a parking, 400 parking spaces will be utilized, but they don't specify will that be utilized for their tenants, for the people there, or for the public at large.
Time. Tom West.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. I haven't noticed, except during festivals and large events, I haven't noticed a lot of parking problems on the square, although I don't own a business on the square. But most times, I can find, when I'm going to the square, be that during the day or at night, I've found parking. In terms of expanding parking to other areas, I wouldn't be a big fan of a multi-story parking lot on the diecast site. I think there are other areas, as you have alluded to, in the area that are closer and could provide parking, provided that they're not developed. But in terms of, you know, parking situations in suburbs or exurbs, I think we have it fairly easy in Woodstock.
Question number two. Mark Endike, you get to go first.
Good.
Since you live a few blocks from the diecast site, according to the 2021 Smart Growth America Study of Woodstock, the former diecast factory site and that area along Clay Street are the first priority for development in Woodstock. The same area was identified by the downtown development plan that City Council approved in 2019 as the city's number-one opportunity site for development. Candidates, tell me, what are your development priorities for the city, and how would you, as a member of City Council, evaluate development proposals that would be brought before you? Mark?
My, my proposal is this. I believe that we have to place infrastructure prior to, and be in place prior to development. We have to put the horse before the cart. Currently, with the diecast site, as you mentioned... Currently, with the diecast site, as you mentioned, there will be five railroad crossings, crossing Clay Street, Madison Church, and Washington Street. That will, could propose a increase, various increase in, in traffic. However, there are certain questions that I have to ask about that site. Are they going to use clean energy? Are they going to, the last traffic study that I found with the city was over 20 years ago. Did they conduct a traffic study? Are they going to provide public transportation? There are certain things that have not been answered to my satisfaction with the diecast site. It is a valuable piece of property. It belongs to us as residents, and we should be able to have full use of that property.
Time. Thank you, Mark. Melissa McMahon.
Yes, I sat in on quite a few of those smart growth meetings. I do believe that diecast is a priority site. What's proposed there is a mixed use with some business, residential, and I think that's important. That diecast site has been an eyesore for a while, and I think it's going to spur more growth, more, more development. So I think it should be taken care of and, and a priority. And also, the plan that they have now to bring in some housing and slowly build that, they're not just going to drop a big giant thing. It is a project, and there are steps, and they are following those. I agree that infrastructure is important with any development, and I know that is part of the plan. So I agree with diecast being a priority.
Bryson Calvin.
Thank you, Larry. What would you evaluate, or how would you evaluate these proposals? When we have a potential rail yard coming to Woodstock in the next four to five years, this diecast site will be critical to providing a picture of demand and need so we can get transportation rail yard put in place for us. Is, are these places going to spur economic growth? Are they going to utilize, like Mark said, clean energy if it's financially feasible? What's this going to do for traffic congestion? Is this going to clog up our city and make it more inconvenient to get down to our, the gem of the square? A lot of questions that need to get answered. And the, the type of housing that we're going to have, is it affordable housing? Is it mixed, is it going to be mixed use with some higher-end units? There's a lot of questions that need to get answered for any of the proposals before I would move forward with voting for any one of them.
Okay, thank you. Natalie Ziamba.
Well, I was encouraged by the three proposals that were brought forward for the diecast site, and I'm looking forward to seeing that finally developed. As Melissa said, it's been an eyesore for quite some time, and I think it will spur additional development in that area. I also like the idea of utilizing already existing structures. So if you've been down Dean Street, you've seen activity in front of the old chiropractic office. That's being, from what I understand, turned into apartments. I like the idea of possibly using the Century Tile that's across from Napoli. Utilize that for something instead of building new. Can we look around our community and see structures that already exist and hear, again, different proposals come forward to the council that would be also open to the public so that we, as, as the public, can see into, you know, what could possibly be going into some of those structures. Thank you.
Tom West.
Yeah, I would agree with Mark in terms of needing the existent infrastructure in order to, to possibly develop, you know, for instance, the diecast site. I think we need to do that very methodically and very thoughtfully before the city of Woodstock rushes headlong into some development project that is, that ill serves the community. I think that would be a bad idea. And in terms of, you know, Melissa was talking about eyesores in the community, and I see many more eyesores on Route 47 that should be developed before we do anything, for instance, with the diecast site or any of the area around there particularly.
Joe Sarszynski.
So I want to compliment the, the, the city council that got this development started. I think, you know, again, I'm in housing, and, and so when I see something actually, say, affordable housing, it's pretty exciting, you know, I think, you know, I kind of see that people are having a hard time actually being able to afford living here. Okay, so, you know, and, and so to have just the option of, of homes that are affordable is, I think, really good and high density. That's who I think what we want to do is, we want to fill in what is available in town rather than way far outside of town and have people that needing to buy two cars or cars that, to travel in. So that is what I think is the best use, and I think the site is, I think the council is going in the right direction, and I want to continue.
Darren Flynn.
Thank you. You know, I do agree that the diecast site is priority one. It is right by the rail. It's the commuter rail. I think that you're going to find that a lot of the people that are living there, with the, the mixed elements of the housing proposition that's coming in, where you have, you know, kind of income-based housing that affords everyone an equally wonderful unit based on what they can afford to pay. That's great for people that have just graduated from college and they're working here, teachers, single parents, you know, people that are downsizing in their lives and then transitioning into an age-friendly community. I believe there's a building that's a 55-plus that is also income-regulated, and then going into a facility that's on the other side closest to where Old Niagara is, that actually, something that's sorely needed is it's an independent living, and then it goes to assisted living and then full memory care. The fact that that facility is close to the downtown, you find that boomers and millennials and Gen, Gen Z actually want the same thing. They want to be close to something, close to activity. They want to be where, where, where things are happening, and they don't have to drive. That also brings 120 jobs after construction to that one building of people that are coming in and working in Woodstock and can hopefully live in Woodstock as well. I think that any development outside of diecast, I think it's very important that we really base it on need. We've had hotel studies done. There's a need for a hotel in the square. We have to find the right place, and we need to partner with the person that owns the property in order to develop it.
Time. Thank you, Darren. Question number three. Tom West, you get to go first.
All right.
Mayor Turner says the two main complaints he hears from citizens in Woodstock are, one, street conditions, and two, the bag fee.
Okay.
The 10-cent tax on single-use plastic and paper bags for large retailers in town. How well do you think the bag tax is working or not?
Well, I have purchased bags, so it must be working to some extent, because sometimes, you know, one forgets, you know, the reusable bags or boxes in the car. Yeah, I don't think it's the worst of ideas. I think it, you know, it, it was developed under Mayor Sager's tenure here in Woodstock, and I think it, you know, there's been some debate about discrimination, discrimination against, you know, low-income peoples in terms of the, the bag tax. But, I mean, I think from an environmental perspective, it's a solid tax, and I would agree with it typically. I think a lot of other, you know, cities and countries have developed a similar sort of tax, and people seem to have no problem with it.
Joe.
Who have just banned plastic bags altogether.
Joe Sarszynski.
You just got to decide when you're leaving the car and you forgot the bag, you got to say, I will go back. I will go back.
Unless you're in the back of the store.
There's that point where you just say, I'm gonna go back. So, and that's all it is. It's really not a big deal. So, I mean, I, what did I, I remember I sponsored races over, you know, the, the Woodstock Challenge, and what did I give out? I gave out reusable bags, okay? That's what you, you know, it's not that hard. Just bring a bag. It's not a big deal. And it's not, then you're not paying anything. It's a good thing to do. At some point, just do a little thing to save the planet. Why not?
Bryson Calvin.
Thank you, Larry. I can't say I'm a, a big proponent of the, the bag tax. I think it's a little primal, but I think the people in Woodstock overall are very environmentally conscious, and we did do a decent job of getting some bags handed out when that bag tax first came around. I kind of would like to see that be sunset. But another of the mayor's top two complaints is the street conditions. I would really like to work hand-in-hand with the public works, and being an employee of the McHenry County Division of Transportation, I'm very familiar with what it takes to replace the roads. To, not only do we have the funding to replace the 50% to 60% of our current city roads, but we need to make sure that we're earmarking other finances to cover the remaining, and also take a serious look at some of our sidewalks for our kids that are going to be biking up and down the roads to make sure that they're not going head over teakettle, you know, on their bike.
Melissa McMahon.
The bag tax is, is a necessary evil. It is, we are not the first city. We're not even, there are whole states that have banned the plastic bags. What I don't think a lot of people realize is that money that we're collecting, we're using that to offset other recycling programs. So a couple months ago, you could bring in your electronics, if you were a resident of Woodstock, you brought your electronics to the administrative office on Ware Road, and you were able to do that for free. That is just another little step in trying to make this a better place for the next generation. We're not the first city. We won't be the last. And I have tried to do that whole carry, see how many things I can carry. And it's like cardio, so it's great. In the long run, it is a good thing for now and for the next generation. So I agree that the bag tax is here, and it's a good thing.
Natalie Ziamba.
I think the environmental impact of the bag tax is actually a secondary result. I think the primary result is the revenue that it could possibly generate, although I'm very cognizant and have been for many, many years, even prior to moving to Woodstock, of using reusable bags. It's, it's a minor inconvenience. It's a minor behavior change that I think does good, yes, for the environment, but those times that I may have forgotten or I'm not in my car, which has a box of reusable bags in the back, and I have to purchase the plastic bag, I almost feel really guilty about doing that. But then I think, okay, that 10 cents is going somewhere, and hopefully it's doing some good. And as Melissa has indicated, it goes towards things right here in, in our community.
Darren Flynn.
First off, it's a bag fee. It's not a bag tax. But I think there's, there's a big piece missing in the backstory that probably hasn't been communicated effectively, in the fact that what happened was at the state level, the state level said we're implementing a bag tax or fee in the state of Illinois, and municipalities had a certain amount of time to act and enact one themselves. So the thing is, is if, if the state chose to move forward with the bag fee, 100% of the, of the fee collected would go back to the state. If the municipality enacted the fee, it goes to the municipality. I think that we would all agree that if we're going to collect some dollars, we'd like it to stay here so that we can do things like the recycling program for electronics, so that we can do different things. The other thing that really the noticeable impact that happened is when the bag fee was implemented and bags were reduced, all of a sudden, we weren't reconditioning and replacing grinder pumps in our stormwater, at our stormwater facility. That's $64,000 to $284,000 a year in replacement for pumps. We're not generating that much in the bag tax, and a big portion of it actually goes back to the retailers to offset the cost of the bags.
Mark Endike.
Well, first, I'd like to address the condition of our roads. We have not maintained our roads for close to 30 years or more, and now we're paying the price for it. As far as the bag tax, and we, and we are going to be funding it. As far as the bag fee is concerned, a lot of people ask me, where did that go? We're not advertising where that bag fee goes. It does stay within the municipality, and it goes to Woodstock's Environmental Management Fund. The, it's, it could be a minor annoyance, but, and as far as a water treatment plant, I took a tour of a water treatment plant this morning, and not only is bags a problem with that, but flushable wipes. And they demonstrated where there are things that are going into our sewer system and our water system that is clogging up our, our treatment centers, and it's going to be a problem within the near future that we're going to have to replace some of the outdated equipment.
Thanks, Mark. The next question will go first to Joe Sarszynski. I'm, I pronounce your name different every time I say it, don't I?
Don't worry about it. You're not the first.
Close enough, huh?
Yeah.
You call me Mr. S.
Using, thanks, Joe.
Yeah, okay.
Using whatever criteria you choose, do you think that Woodstock Square and downtown area are successful? If yes, why? And if not, how would you change that?
Successful to the point it's like still the focal, sort of the, you know, cultural focal point of our town, and hopefully remains that way. And it certainly seems like we're investing in it the way I, you know, in a lot of ways, I think we should. Does it have a lot of potential to be better? I think it does. But, you know, again, you know, okay, so the, the investment we've put into the courthouse to make it a more viable alternative for use in, in restaurants, breweries, banquets, et cetera, that, that's all good, that we've decided to open, like in the past five or plus years, decided to make the square a place where we can have more events. That's really good. That's really good. All that, putting, again, more housing around the center will help the restaurants, the bars, the shops, everything. So I think we're in the right direction.
Natalie Ziamba, downtown.
You got it. I think it is successful in that it draws some really lovely media attention and PR, as we saw in the last year, and I think we're kind of riding that, that wave right now and amplifying the message of how fabulous Woodstock is because we're utilizing that, that space. It's good for marketing campaigns, but I don't think it's, it's being leveraged to its fullest potential. And by that, I mean, there's still some empty spaces there that I would love to see filled, number one. And two, just around the square, as, as Joe mentioned, I would really like to see a little bit more affordable residential housing. And three, the maintenance of the square. I, I've been listening to a lot of council meetings, and it comes up again and again, in that we're not really maintaining to the best of our ability, and we're not ADA compliant in all parts of our, of our square, the walkability of it. So maintaining that square is really important.
Darren Flynn.
Is there room to improve the square? Absolutely. Is it successful? I think that with, right now, in my mind, I was kind of running around the square, and other than the old BMO building that's currently being redeveloped, the former Swiss maid that has kind of reached a standstill with the new owners, I think there's honestly only one vacancy, maybe, on the square. And it's not even on the square. It's actually off the square across from Liquid Blues. I'm trying to think of what else would be vacant. Anyway, the, the thing that's interesting, there's, there's always room for improvement. And SGA came to town through the T-Mobile win, and they did a great consulting piece where they talked about, they identified red spots in the city, and, and red in this case is good. And so they said, what you need to do is concentrate and spread the red, and you need a catalyst, you need a catalyst within. Our catalyst right now is the courthouse, in the fact that we're restoring for a 100-year project with the courthouse, that this can serve many, many more. I'm being told it's my time's up. I got a lot more to talk about, but anyway, we'll come back to it, I'm sure.
Tom West.
Yeah, I think that there are, you know, definitely businesses that I like to go to in the square, and I think that the square is successful in a way. I'd like to see, I know that there was a lot of money recently pumped into the renovation of the courthouse building, and I don't know if the outcomes will justify the monies spent. I think that Woodstock could have a burgeoning arts scene, but what the courthouse building is currently being used for is not the arts as it was in the past. I'm not saying that it was necessarily successful in prior years, but it would be nice if there were arts-based organizations that were included in the courthouse and in the city of Woodstock that are currently not there. And I think that would bring definitely a more vibrant culture to, to the city of Woodstock.
Mark Endike.
As a longtime resident, I might be nostalgic, but I remember a time when I could walk to the square or drive to the square and do a lot of my retail shopping. That's not the case today. There are very few times, except for farmer's market or the events, that actually, we will actually go and participate. The rents are high. The rents are high, turnover is high, there might be vacant, few vacant buildings on the square at this point, but if you look at our restaurant turnover, our retail business turnover, it is considerable. Most businesses will stay in business for less than five to six years. As far as the courthouse being a draw, I think that, yes, it will be. It's an 100-year project, it was very expensive. I think a few years down the road, we won't really look at that expense, but look at the beautiful building that we have acquired. I do believe, though, that once the novelty wears off, I do not believe that it will be a major draw into our downtown area. It has a brewery, it has a restaurant, it does not have public space, as what we were told that it would have, and I do not believe that unless the...
Thanks, Mark.
I keep doing that, sorry.
Bryson Calvin.
Do I think the square is successful? I personally do, but I think that that really comes down and depends on who you ask. Are anchor and feature areas, the opera house, the courthouse, sustainable, flourishing, or soon to be flourishing? But if you ask some small business merchants, maybe not. When, I owned Main Street Porthouse for six years, and I watched at least half a dozen businesses open and close in my stead. And six years is not a feasible amount of time to generate any significant revenue. How do we do better? We take a look at the revolving loan fund and consider who we want to give our funds to. We need businesses that have solid, sustainable business plans with three-year projections that are going to show net positive results, and, I apologize. I rest my time. All right, thank you.
At least you, Melissa. Downtown, you know anything about that?
A little bit, a little bit. Being last, I actually, there's a little bit of everybody's that I agree with. There is always room for improvement. Darren hit that nail on the head. On a whole, it really depends on who you ask, like Bryson said, is the square successful? Big picture is yes. Yes, it is. It is the square that brings people to Woodstock. People are not coming to shop at Walmart, and I think, I think Darren even said this in the forum four years ago, which I rewatched, it's like a study. That is what draws people here. It's our job as council, as staff, as residents, to help our businesses succeed, to bring in businesses, like Bryson said, with stable plans, with thought-out plans to make a long time go of this. Short answer is, the square is successful. Does it have room for improvement? Absolutely. I think we have a wonderful crop of businesses on the square right now, and really would like to see that continue. We have few spaces that are open, so I think we are on a good path.
Okay, Melissa, you go first on the next question, number five. The Metro rail yard has been mentioned, so let's talk about it. City officials have advocated moving the Metro rail yard from Crystal Lake to Woodstock, an idea supported by Metro and Crystal Lake. The positives, the positives are believed to be an increase in passenger train service to our city, creation of jobs at a local maintenance facility, and population growth, perhaps even rapid growth. The negatives could be more blocked crossings, greater congestion in the downtown area, and perhaps rapid population growth, depending on how you feel about growth. Where do you stand on the proposal, and why?
I do support the move of the rail yard to Woodstock. Where it is now in Crystal Lake is not a benefit to them. Where we are proposing for it in Woodstock would be a benefit to us. It is on the outskirts, it's not right in the center of the heart of the city. There are benefits that it could bring, more jobs, it could bring more residents. There are negatives, it could bring more residents too fast. One concern I have for the Metro increase in the amount of traffic that it could bring is, we should, and I send this to city staff, look into quiet zones now, before Metro is moved, before everything gets placed, this is almost like infrastructure. There is a petition for a quiet zone. Because we go through the heart of Woodstock as many times as it's possible, look into that. That consists of train horns and things like that. So that's one piece of Metro that we think we should instigate there.
Thank you. Natalie Ziembah.
Well, in the voters' guide today, in the Independent, as you'll see, I am definitely in favor of it. There are things that will, of course, be seen as negatives, or, as we were asked and it was stated, not so good. Things like congestion, population growth, but I would remind everyone here and the voters in the city, this is Metro. And so we're not talking about something that tomorrow, there's going to be a rail yard, right? This is something over a long period of time, it's going to be very slow-moving. So I would say we might see some activity over the course of the next several years. So again, it's going to take time. I was in DC for four days, as I said in my introduction. If we think that we're going to see congestion, go spend some time on the streets of DC. It takes an hour to go three miles. So the congestion we may see at those traffic stops or in and around that area is really nominal, I think, compared to the benefit that we would see with the rail yard moving.
Darren Flynn.
I am in favor of the rail yard being moved. I think that, the thing that, as Natalie mentioned, we have time, this is Metro. They've planned it in their budget, but it's down the road. You have the railroad and Metro, they're like best friends that fight all the time. So you never know, you know, they're trying to reach an accord as to when something like this can happen. I love the fact that we could, you know, something that will bring new jobs, I think, is a great thing. I think that in this time, we have to be very strategic in regards to what we want and where with growth. I love the quiet zone areas, I think that's great, and that settles for the increase in residents, it's planned strategic growth. People can't move where there is not a house, where there is not an apartment or something for them to live in. So that's where satisfying that growth and keeping our traffic and our congestion in mind during that. Schedule, I think that that is one of the biggest hits, in the fact that by having the rail yard here, we would have express trains to the city. And also, a more comprehensive schedule, and currently, we're having to go to Crystal Lake if we want to be off schedule, and we know we're not going to be home on time. So I think that it's the convenience go forward is a great benefit to the city of Woodstock.
Mark Endicke.
I'm torn. I think the Metro trail will bring positive and greater visibility and access to our community, as mentioned before. The railroad, the five railroad crossings, possible air pollution, noise pollution, I'm not sure that that has been thoroughly investigated. I live adjacent to that, so that's a concern of mine. And I'm not sure I want to live in the larger city in McHenry County. You know, our population hasn't increased materially over the last few years, and I don't think this is an amenity that is necessary for us. And if it is, why does Crystal Lake want to get rid of it?
Bryson Calvin.
I love the idea on its face of the rail yard, Larry, but let us not forget that Union Pacific owns that railroad. And Illinois consistently ranks in the top five for train derailments and crash incidents dating back to 2014. Chicago is the epicenter, so I understand why they could be in the top five, but there's clearly a safety problem. As it relates to Metro, not so much of an issue, but Union Pacific hauls hazardous materials quite often. So I think that this rail yard and service station, great idea, but we need to have Union Pacific offer us disclosures to our first responders about the material that they're carrying, especially as it relates to hazmat. And further, we can utilize, I looked into this a little bit, Union Pacific offers, they facilitate train companies to prepare for potential incidents. So if we could utilize that with our first responders, offer our citizens a little bit more safety and reassurance that, you know, we're not having massive potential for spills coming through, like East Palestine. I love the potential for the job growth and the population growth, great idea, but growth is sustainable if it is measured and slow.
Tom West.
Yeah, I'm kind of up in the air on this question as well. I kind of agree with Mark that I think there needs to be a real thought going into this before we make any decisions. I, you know, I would hesitate to say that I would like a massive wave of population growth in Woodstock. I think that would be a detriment to the community. You know, and I'd like to know why Metro wants to move the rail yards to Woodstock. I think the two boons would be that, you know, we would have better Metro schedules, and that would be, you know, a good thing.
Joe Starzinski.
Well, my, I think my understanding is that Crystal Lake is already too small, that if Metro wants to begin to increase service, that yard they have in Crystal Lake is too small. So they're going to go, either, I think they're going to go somewhere. So why not it be us, and why not that we finally get a full schedule, so that...
But I think, like, I just wanted to...
Yeah, yeah, didn't I say it? Let's go.
But, you know, I, why is one, I mean, you can't have a, Woodstock can't have a better schedule from the state in terms of the train service without the rail yards? That's what I'd be asking. I mean, it seems like that Woodstock is prominent in both Harvard and...
I'm positive, we get the rail yard, we'll get that full schedule. And I think, you know, I've been, you know, one of those people, oh, I got to drive to Crystal Lake now, and then on that schedule, and how am I going to get back? Or let's say I don't have a car. So these are all decisions in when people decide to, if they want to live here. Now we're just giving them, you know, a choice, you know, oh, so it's easier to live here. That's good. That's good. So I'm for it.
Thank you. We're halfway through, so you can silently stretch if you want to. Question number six, we'll start with Natalie Ziembah. Let's imagine you know a family that is moving to McHenry County, and they're just trying to decide between Woodstock and Crystal Lake to set up their residence. Give your best one-minute pitch on why the family should choose Woodstock.
Choose Woodstock because, one, we have a thriving, burgeoning downtown business district; two, we have amazing schools; three, the people are absolutely wonderful; four, the farmer's market. It's a vibrant city that feels like home. It's comfortable, it's friendly, it's lively, but it's also charming, it's also quaint, and it's very family-friendly. Plus, it's not Crystal Lake, and we're not trying to be Crystal Lake. We have a unique identity, and I think that's really important. We want to preserve that. And you want to raise your family in a place that feels good. And when you walk around Woodstock, it feels good.
Tom West, why Woodstock?
Yeah, I think Woodstock offers a number of things that I really like. I think it has some thriving businesses. I think, you know, that park could be stepped up a little bit, but that's not what really drew me to the town initially. I was more interested in becoming a Woodstock resident because of the, you know, the parks, park system, the natural lands around it, the forest preserves, animal habitats, and the tranquility, really, of Woodstock. And I think that's what a lot of people in the town appreciate, is that we are not, you know, El Gonquin or Crystal Lake, we haven't been overdeveloped yet, and we still have a chance to be a really unique city in northern Illinois.
Joe Starzinski.
So I have a girlfriend who's in Chicago, and she and her friends are always like, oh, we got to come out to Woodstock. And I say, you should kind of check this out, because we're kind of different, right? You should come see it. So the first thing I'll say is, one, I think that, you know, to me, part of what I like about the town is, I do think that we care about each other. I mean, I've been, I've been part of the Rotary Club, which is a service club, and when I look at like what that club's been doing for 40-plus years and feeding the people, I do think that there's something different about this place, of how we take care of each other. You know, again, back to what I tell, you know, I tell people, hey, you got to come out here, we have a Buddhist temple, we have a pride parade. That doesn't go on, look around McHenry County, that's not in other places. We have a farmer's market, we, you know, we have the central beautiful little square that's like this little park, it's gorgeous. I could go on and on, I could go on about, you know, why I moved to this town in the first place, because it was a lot like where I came from, and then my kids could just walk to school, like, all the schools are right there, they didn't have to, and they can go play, it didn't have to like hover over them and, you know, keep, I mean, they were safe.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, sorry.
Melissa McMahon.
Okay. I've actually given this pitch, and I've had people tell me they've moved here. A big part of it is, I can introduce you to half a dozen families who moved here and told me they moved here because of our Pride Festival. I'm very proud of our Pride Festival. We have a welcoming community that is safe and accepting, and not everyone might agree with that, but it has brought people here. It's because we take care of each other. People wave to each other. We look out for each other's kids, you know. I don't have to worry about my daughter doing something stupid, because someone's going to know her and someone's going to tell me. And she's already been warned of this. But that's what Woodstock is. Woodstock is home. Woodstock is your chosen family. Like I said, we waved to people. When we still had the five-way stop at where the new roundabout is, it would take a little longer to get through, because people were so nice, nobody was going through it. You'd all get there at the same time, and you'd wave at each other, and it would take a little while, and that's wonderful. That is what makes Woodstock, Woodstock.
Thank you, Melissa. Mark Endicke.
Well, it might not sound to all at this point, but I am a big promoter of Woodstock. We love the city. Woodstock is a diverse community. We don't all see that all the time, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, about 30% of our community is Hispanic. We have a great library, it's phenomenal. If you don't use it, you really should. As we've mentioned, the amenities, as this opera house, potentially the courthouse, it does need improvement. We have to, like I said, I keep harping on improving our infrastructure, but it definitely has a hometown feel, it definitely is a welcoming community, and is a community of big heart. We have so many nonprofit organizations that contribute to the welfare of all our citizens that I've never lived in another place before. Our police department, if you wave to them, they wave back. I've never lived in someplace like that. So, yes.
Darren Flynn.
I think, can speak to this personally, because it's like when we were looking at Woodstock to move here a few years ago, it was very interesting, because one of the first things that someone said was, this community has a heart. We care about each other, and, you know, we're very inclusive. And then Woodstock proved it with the inclusivity of Mexican Independence Day on the square, the Pride Parade, the Pride Fest. It's not just a parade anymore, it's a fest. And just having the diversity and the inclusiveness, the square is phenomenal. It's, we have what other communities are trying to build. We have what Huntley is trying to build, what other places are doing, and we have it. So it's very important that we preserve it, protect it, and promote it. And then, I'm surprised that no one's mentioned Groundhog's Day. I mean, hello.
It's in secret.
It's like, come on, you know, come on, I mean, Groundhog's Day, I mean, that's the elevator pitch, so anyway.
Bryson Calvin.
We're the only city that...
Larry, I believe that you asked for a pitch, correct? Can I give you a pitch?
Sixty-second.
Okay. Larry, I want you to come to Woodstock and enjoy our bustling downtown. The square offers so many amenities and delectable dining experiences, or, if you're not into the downtown situation, just take a five-mile drive outside of the square, where you will make it, any direction will take you into the country for a scenic drive. Embrace and celebrate cultural and ethnic differences in Woodstock, because that's what we do. We have plenty of recreational opportunities at Emmerichson Park, Olson Park, or the Rec Center, Woodstock Water Works. Our farmer's market is top in the state. If you'd like to take a train to the city, you could, for fine dining experiences, but we have them right here. Woodstock in the center of it all.
Bryson, can you write our next commercial?
Thanks, Bryson, but we've already moved here. Question seven, Darren Flynn, please lead us off. Consider that same scenario of a family moving to McHenry County, trying to decide between Crystal Lake and Woodstock. Knowing what you know about Woodstock, assume you're working for Crystal Lake. What are two or three reasons that family might not want to live in Woodstock?
Groundhog's Day. Let's see.
Yeah, you know, I think that when it comes to reasons not to live in Woodstock, I think if you look at...
if you look at, you know, any other community, not to name Crystal Lake specifically, I mean, the only reason they would say not to live here would be out of sheer jealousy. So I think that's something that we have to look at. You know, I mean, the only thing I can think of is we're a couple of miles down the road when it comes to getting to 90, a little further. Unfortunately, we don't have a full-service hospital, which, you know, Crystal Lake will have soon. Trying to think, we don't have the train schedule that Crystal Lake does currently, but, you know, that's, that could be coming. And I really can't think of any other reason why, you know, why you would say anything bad about Woodstock.
Woodstock's not perfect, Tom West. What are you gonna tell them?
Yeah, it's not perfect. No, I would say that Woodstock has a lot to offer. I think the three things that may be missing from the Woodstock experience may be, yeah, as Mr. Flynn mentioned, health services probably would be one, a big one. Probably restaurants, not to diss on anyone's restaurant here in Woodstock, but I think we need a few more dining establishments. And, I don't know, what's the third one? What does Crystal Lake have that we don't have? I don't know, I think I can only come up with two tonight.
Right. Bryson Calvin, unsell me on Woodstock.
Unsell you, Larry? Okay, well, I'd say, you know, Woodstock's a little bit farther from the city of Chicago, so if you'd like to go down there and enjoy yourself, Woodstock might not be as ideal as Crystal Lake, cuz you can hop on the train, it's a shorter ride, it's a shorter access to I-90, but you know what? There's cheaper gas in Wisconsin than Crystal Lake. While Crystal Lake does offer more big-box stores and maybe overall just a sense of overall shopping amenities, I think that that is what makes Woodstock so unique, is that while we do have a couple, we also have a lot of smaller shops that can cater to people's palates. And that's ultimately why my wife and I reside here versus Crystal Lake. If you, oh man, I gotta come up with the third one. Oh, boy, is my time up? My time's up, sorry, Larry.
Mark Endic.
Well, a couple of things that Crystal Lake has that we could use. Public transportation. Woodstock, Crystal Lake has bike paths and alternate means of transportation that we don't have. I find that a lot of times, if I'm looking for a restaurant that is open during reasonable hours and supplies decent amount of food, that I would go to Crystal Lake. I don't find Woodstock a welcoming environment, I don't go to bars, and I don't find that for entertainment, for my needs of entertainment, that Woodstock does not provide, at the Roar Center, that Woodstock does provide the same thing as Crystal Lake.
Melissa McMahon, give Crystal Lake some ammunition.
You do know my job is to sell Woodstock. If you, okay, if you don't want your kids to have, you know, okay, I, I really have a hard time thinking, I mean, it's just, Target, there you go, Target, okay? There you go, Crystal Lake, Woodstock. Yeah, that's it.
That's, that's good. Joe Starzinski.
We're missing a, like, a good quality, good motel motel. We could use that, but I think, you know, that comes from, if, if, you know, we keep on developing the culture and the events in the town, then eventually that will come. What else? You know, what do we don't, we don't have? We don't have that big four-lane road yet. I mean, yeah, they have Randall Road, that's great, but, you know, to move traffic, but we're eventually going to have that, it's just a little ways away. Trying to think, yeah, I'm a cyclist, I like to bike. I wish we had more, in this town anyway, more, you know, things that, you know, whether it's on the roads or whatever, that were friendly, especially around, you know, the square and all that, for that mode of travel, but that's just me.
Natalie Ziemba.
This is the one time that I wish my last name began with A and we went alphabetically. So, I mean, there's so many great answers, it's really hard to not sell Woodstock. I would say, if you want congestion, as far as traffic, move to Crystal Lake, because 14 can be a real bear, so can Randall Road. We don't have a Target, and I feel like that's one thing that keeps coming up. But I also like that we don't have a lot of big-box stores. I think that that actually is an asset for us. We also don't have something like a Three Oaks recreational center, but we do have beautiful Emerson Park, and we have, you know, our wonderful pool and our rec center. So there are additional amenities that feel good. So, yeah, it's, it's hard to not sell it.
Okay. Bryson Calvin, you answer first on this next one, please. Some Woodstock residents have complained about high property taxes. You might have heard a few of them. But it funds schools and local government. One way to address high taxes is to broaden the city's tax base through more residential and business construction. What ideas do you have that would expand the city's tax base and spread that tax burden over a larger base?
That's a great question, Larry. Incorporating larger and small businesses, getting them licensing fees and titling, not titling, but the insertion fees, to make sure that they're paying their fair share. A lot of that, I would really like to see go towards larger commercial businesses that want to move into here and have that burden on them, since their margins are significantly larger than any low-income or residential housing of any use. So keep it focused on some of those large, big-box stores to try to help offset some of the burden that's on the taxpayer.
Darren Flynn, expand our tax base.
You know, I think the first thing to realize is our taxes are, you know, people think that our taxes are high, but the city of Woodstock only receives about 14% to 15% of the total bill that comes in. So it's, that's the percentage that comes back to the city of Woodstock, and hasn't raised the taxes for almost 12 years. And actually, there was a half percent decrease when the home real sales tax was brought in. So a portion of the home real sales tax actually pays back to the property tax fund. So I think that your tax bill may have gone up through other taxing bodies, or the value of your home increased, which is a great thing. But I think that one of the biggest things that we are on the cusp of and could really generate quite a bit is if we were to get a dispensary in Woodstock. That's one thing. I think that we could also do business registration, which could be business permits for business fees. I think that that is something that also is an economic development tool. We can then know what we have, we're collecting the fees for it. I think we could do like other communities, and we could actually do permits, like city permits, and offer services in exchange for the permits. Like, we have a neighboring community that you do a city sticker for your car, and what you get is its brush cleanup and its other things that happen as an offset. Time's up, sorry.
Mark Endic.
I'm sorry, but I have to disagree. I think that rather than expanding our tax base, we should watch what we spend. We should spend what we need, not what we want. I believe that there, that Woodstock is spending more for consultant fees, for things that are not necessary, that we can do in-house. And I believe that, that instead of expanding our tax base with future development, we should concentrate on our infrastructure and what we need to reduce taxes by controlling spending.
Melissa McMahon.
This is the fun of being somewhere in the middle. I've heard some of my own answers. I agree that we need a dispensary here in town. The tax that would be generated from that is worthwhile and worth looking after. I also have city car permit on my list, an annual fee. We are collecting an extra three cents on our gas right now, and that's going into our road funding. As we get more and more electric cars, we need to think of how we can offset what we won't be getting in that gas tax. So one suggestion would be a nominal annual fee for your sticker tax. I came from Hoffman Estates. When I moved to Woodstock and they said, you don't have that, I was like, oh, okay. Something we grew up with. So as far as expanding our tax base, bringing in more businesses. More businesses will bring more sales tax, more residents will bring more property tax. Strategic growth is what we need.
Joe Starzinski.
So, the, is it, you know, this can be looked at like the chicken or the egg, what comes first? Do you, cuz to get taxes away from the rooftops, you need it to, you need other things that will take up what, you know, still gotta pay the bills. So I don't, I don't think that the city is, you know, grossly overspending or wasting money actually. So, I mean, you could look at maybe some little things, but generally, I think that what you need to do is continue to bring the maximum effort to trying to bring manufacturing, commercial, that sort of tax base, cuz that's really the only, you know, retail, that is the only way to get the taxes off the rooftops. So is it housing, maybe, getting people who can actually afford to live here and then, and then work here and work in the business? Those manufacturers, those entities that would come here, that, what is first? So that's.
Tom West.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mark almost wholly on this one. I don't think we should be nickel-and-diming citizens regarding gas tax and stick, and car stickers and that sort of stuff. I think that's not the direction that Woodstock needs to be going. I think there are things that we could be doing, as such as Mark mentioned, which are eliminating consulting fees, possibly eliminating high-level administrative, administrative jobs in the city that are unnecessary, and spending, you know, what we have. You know, spending the monies within Woodstock's budget. I think like, you know, an idea that you brought up was like having light manufacturing businesses, I think that can expand, expand the tax base and possibly even lower taxes on residents, which are obviously much higher in Illinois than they are in surrounding states like Wisconsin or Indiana.
Thank you, Tom. Natalie Ziemba.
I think that a good look at the property tax bill that we get, you'll notice that the taxing bodies are, you know, our schools and our county. I, on city council, cannot possibly lower the tax burden so much from the city that it's going to make this monumental notice on your, on your taxes. What we can do is think about drawing businesses that can remove a bit of that burden off of the rooftops, as Joe put it. I'm not in favor of adding additional fees like a city sticker, which is really nice not to have, coming from, from the city, coming from surrounding suburbs that have a vehicle sticker. I'm, I'm not in favor of those type of additional fees in order to offset that cost.
Thank you. Natalie Ziemba, lead off this discussion.
Getting a lot of lead-offs here, okay, I'm, I'm ready.
Well, I've had to rearrange things.
That's all right. I'll take it.
As a popularly elected government body, the Woodstock City Council is tasked with representing the entire community of Woodstock. If you were elected, how will you balance the needs of businesses versus the needs of residents? And what differences do you see between the two?
Listening. Going into businesses and talking to the owners, talking to the people that work there. They may not even be a resident of Woodstock, but I take a lot of pride in, in doing that over the last couple of months. Once I made the decision to run for council, I made it a priority to stop into businesses and talk to the people that operate it. What do they need from me? What do they need from us as their elected officials? And then just let them talk and listen to what they have to say. Same thing with residents. I go and I ask people, and I listen to what they wanna hear. And I take a lot of pride in also listening to those that are brave enough to come up to that podium, to that microphone at council meetings as residents of this community, and talk to the people on the dais, including the mayor and the six council members currently. And just hearing from them and really taking the time to listen to what they have to say.
Joe Starzinski.
I'm gonna reiterate what Natalie said. I think basically that your job, if you're going to be a council member, you're there to serve. So if you're there to serve, you're there to serve both business and resident. And you just have to, I mean, it does take some balance, you've gotta balance out everybody, and probably part of it is also disseminating information. You know, you, you hear like, you know, what, you know, trying to understand how things work and to explain things to both businesses and residents. Hey, this is how it works, and try to make things fair and balanced. Like, listen, yeah, so.
Melissa McMahon.
Just like Natalie and Joe said, communication is key. Communication is key whether we are a town of 25,688, I think it is, or we're 100,000. It is communication. It is an open dialogue. Council is a conduit. You're a conduit from city staff and the city governing body to the residents, to the businesses, but also one between the, between the businesses and the residents. Talking to, listening to, and acting on is, is what we're here for. So I'm not gonna get the red card this time. So that's it. Communication is key and listening.
Bryson Calvin.
Be as knowledgeable as possible about the concerns of the business and the people. How do we do better? That's the first question I would ask anybody that has a concern, whether they're a business owner or just a citizen of the town. How can we do better? What can we do to be able to provide for you guys in a better way or a more efficient manner, a safer manner? Whatever it is, it is of greatest concern at that time. Listen, and listening and communication are absolutely critical in this position.
Darren Flynn.
I think it's a very, it's, it's a balance that's often, you know, it's, it's kind of a, it's often in conflict, because what serves residents doesn't necessarily serve the businesses, what serves the businesses doesn't serve the residents necessarily. So it's very important as council, as a collective body, to find that balance. And you have to listen for, you know, to both entities, both groups, to find out what the true needs are. And then, I think city staff, it's very important under council's direction, city staff needs to really go out and find the businesses that will serve the community's needs. And so we have this circle, basically, that it's with business registration, it's like we have to know what we have before we know what we need. And we can actually move forward, and we can try to find the businesses that are there and see people seeing that we don't have another of the same thing, but we have other things that people are asking for, so that we can have a well-rounded offering for our community.
Tom West.
I think overall, businesses should, should serve the needs of the residents. I mean, that's, that's presumably why they're there. You know, I think that, that that's my position on, on that subject. I think a couple of candidates have hit upon some qualities that make for mediation between the two, between businesses and residents, better, that being knowledgeable and being fully understanding of the situations of, of businesses and residents with regard to residents, and having always open lines of communication and listening to both sides objectively, and then making decisions from there.
Mark Endic.
Well, I, I agree that there has to be a symbiosis between businesses and residents. One of the deficiencies that I found with the city council and city government is that a lot of times, city council is a full-time job. It's not something that you read the packet every other month and you vote upon it. You read the minutes of various commissions, but I have never seen a council member at any of the commissions. There, you can listen to public comment, to see what they have to say, and it could definitely affect your business. It's, I agree, we have to be responsive. We have to be responsive to the point where even if we don't have an answer, we at least will be able to get a response and educate people of why that, that condition or that concern is, cannot be achieved. I'm sorry, but I'm stuttering, I have a problem with that.
Can I say one thing really quick? I just wanna point out, I don't know that people are really aware of it, but when it comes to commissions and council-attending commissions, we are asked not. comes to commissions and council-attended commissions, we are asked not to attend commission meetings unless we're assigned to that commission, so that there's not a perceived influence by that council member for anything that happens to be on their plate, so that it comes to commission, it comes to council with the commission's recommendations. And so, that way, it's not perceived unless we're personally, if there's something going in front of that commission that's personally involving us. So, I just wanted to make that point.
Let's talk about a commission.
Yeah.
Mark, why don't you go answer this one first? The City's Historic Preservation Commission is charged with protecting the historical integrity of the downtown area, but it is merely an advisory body, commission, advisory body to the city council, which can overrule the commission recommendations, and it sometimes does that to favor business development. As a council member, what considerations do you believe would warrant your vote to overturn a recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission?
I wouldn't, I would not do that. The Historic Preservation Commission has had a long series of restoring our city, our, our square, and, you know, within the community. They have been overridden in certain instances for the sake of business, but not for the sake of aesthetics. As far as I'm concerned, historic preservation should be paramount. It is the fake face that would be presented to our community and to communities around the area. So, no, I wouldn't override it.
Melissa McMahon.
It's an interesting question. As a commission member myself on Parks and Rec, we realize that our job is simply to be that conduit to city staff and city, city council. In terms of historic preservation, I think you need to make sure that your commission is made up of people who are qualified to make those decisions. But as to whether or not you would overturn, I think that's a case-by-case basis. I, I don't think I could give you one answer or another. It would really depend on, as council, our job is to make decisions by listening to our, our residents and making the best decision for the whole. It's not our personal opinions. It's not anyone's personal opinion. It is, is trying to be a, a citizen, like a servant to our city. We are here to, to do the best for the whole, so I can't answer that completely.
Bryce and Calvin.
Larry, I'm hard pressed to think of any reason why I might overrule a decision handed down by the Preservation Commission. They're, they're tasked with upholding the aesthetics of the square, and unless they double back to make repairs or do the redo of facade that's, you know, not very old, that I'd really, can't think of a reason why a competent individual making decisions based on the aesthetics of the square should be overruled by a councilwoman or man.
Natalie Ziemba.
I recently met with somebody from this Historic Preservation Commission, very recently, and had a tremendous conversation with him. And I will say, he is far more knowledgeable about what should be done, the information. I, it was incredible. I was blown away. And that knowledge is there for a reason, and that person sat on that commission for a reason. We as council should put our trust in that commission to know what is duly right. That is what they're there to do. And I, I would agree. I don't, I don't know what case I would, I would look at and say I would, I would choose to overrule what that commission has made a decision on. I, I just, I don't see that.
Tom West.
Yeah, I think this is something we, we can pretty much all agree on, which is that I would not overrule a decision made by the commission.
Joe Starzinski.
All right, so, all the, I've served on parks and rec. I've served on social and cultural awareness now. So, all of those commissions are advisory. You guys don't elect them. So, the only people who are elected are the council members. So, ultimately, they have to be the ones who are responsible, and, you know, then you get to choose, oh, I don't want this person on the council because they made this choice. The advisory couns, commissions don't have that accountability. They may be experts, that's fine, but ultimately, it's the decision of the council, because everything from the advisory goes to them. So, there are some cases, and when I served on council, there were cases, there was one I could remember, but I would run out of time telling it, that we did overrule historical preservation. So, that's all I'll say.
Okay. Everybody answer that?
I don't think I did. I didn't answer.
Oh, you're the councilman.
I know, I know, my God.
Darren?
Yeah, I think, I think Joe makes a great point in the fact that the, the commissions, they, they are advisory commissions, and it, and it really is, that the information that they provide is very, very important, because they're considered the subject matter experts. I can think of the most recent recommendation was, I think, the train station. There were some people that were very upset with it because of the cladding that went around the base of the train station. And it was actually in The Independent. And, and the thing is, is the material, it needed to be done to preserve the architectural, the actual structural integrity of the building. It was very in keeping with the time, but it wasn't how it had always been. So, that's where the difficult decisions come through, in the fact that sometimes you have to say, okay, is it the right look? It may not be how it always was, but is it the right look? And I think we also have to be very focused on what period in time are we preserving? You know, I think it's very important to, to focus on what period of time we're preserving.
Thank you. Tom West, go first on this next question. Woodstock is updating its 15-year-old comprehensive plan for growth and development, hoping to create a more attractive and welcoming community that would lure new residents and new businesses to come here. What developments, besides Target?
I don't even shop at Target.
Do you believe would make Woodstock more attractive to people?
Yeah, probably not Target. What developments? I mean, I think developing, you know, restaurants, nightlife, having more things to do as far as the cultural scene in Woodstock. I think all those are, would be great, greatly important developments, as would, you know, art spaces and spaces for teens to, you know, public spaces for teens to hang out. You know, my partner has two teens and they have, they have precious little places to go that are public spaces within Woodstock, aside from, you know, the Walmart and, if built, the Target. So, I think those are, those are important things to consider.
Joe Starzinski.
So, I develop culture more than anything. You know, big box retailers and that, it, that, you know, look what's happening, you know, Amazon's killing, you know, everybody. So, that will, I don't know how that's gonna, like, the long term of, of, you know, making commitments to any things like that. Culture, though, brings about smaller things, like smaller, you know, retailers and that, those big boxes don't want to have anything to do with. So, that's where, you know, I think we should concentrate on, the smaller business.
Bryce and Calvin.
I believe that the, things would be, make more attractive with more opportunities and places for our kids. I personally, with my wife, am looking at a venue in Woodstock for such an opportunity. We're in the exploratory phases, for sensory development and kids to just congregate, socialize, be children, and, and have good cognitive, social opportunities for development. I do believe that a nice hotel would also fit quite well into the city. But other than that, for growth and development, the 15-year plan, slow, sustainable growth. I don't want anything to happen too fast.
Melissa McMahon.
Can I please actually ask you to repeat the question? I feel like a couple of different things are happening.
In the 15-year-old comprehensive plan that Woodstock is updating to try to make the community more attractive and welcoming to new residents and new businesses, what developments or changes in Woodstock do you believe would make this a more attractive place?
So, okay, thank you for clarifying. I agree with everybody. We need things for kids. We need hotels. We need that. But something, and it's happening now, it was talked about in council just this week, being in the business I'm in, I know that people look for information. They are looking for information. I think the city of Woodstock needs to, and they are planning, redesign of their website. If you go on the Wood, city website right now, if you look up lighting at the square, it is very possible that a page from 2002 is going to come up first. I think to attract potential businesses, residents, manufacturers, industry, you need an up-to-date, easy-to-use website that features what we love about Woodstock.
Natalie Ziemba.
One, a hotel, preferably something more along the lines of a boutique-style hotel that is small and fits within the aesthetics of what is currently here in Woodstock. When I spoke to the young gentleman at Warp Core, they had some fantastical ideas about things for young people, namely, and they would prefer, of course, an indoor/outdoor skate park. We also talked about something like a roller rink for young people to have an activity to go to, and again, socialize and participate. Three interconnected accessible sidewalks that get someone from one side of Woodstock to the other easily, conveniently, and that they are well-maintained. And four, welcoming signage. Where is our beautiful welcome to Woodstock? Woodstock, you are here. I want something that looks beautiful, is well-maintained, and welcomes people into the community.
Darren Flynn.
I think with the comprehensive plan, I think one of the things is, the first thing we need is, we need a plan. We need to know where we want to go. And the plan that we had is from 2008, and it really had no measurement tools. It was a guide, in a way, but there were no measurement tools to see how do we get there. And I think that we actually need a plan so we can say, what do we need? The first things that come into my mind, we need art. I love, there's art space right now that our grant writer is working on and holding meetings in regards to getting the space, so that we can have an art space in the community that people can interact and have it in the right place. And I think that that's a wonderful thing. I'd love to see an ice rink back at Emmerichson. I think that everybody talks about it that's been here for years, and I think it's an absolutely wonderful thing to do, and, and, you know, if we could get someone to build a roller rink, that would be great, too. And hotels, obviously. I've mentioned hotels before as well.
Mark Endic.
Woodstock is a city of small businesses. I think to retain our, to retain and promote small business is the wave of the future. I'm not in favor of big backs, big box stores, because it takes people out of the central, century of our community, requires transportation, and it means to get there. As a member of the Woodstock Transportation Commission, we have implemented some of the things that we want in our, in our 20-year plan, such as bike paths, contiguous sidewalks, which we mapped, which we mapped, we mapped out. We mapped out potential bike paths. We looked at alternate means of transportation, and we looked at a reliable, affordable public transportation. Woodstock, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, to retain small businesses, I think it means a four-pronged approach. The Chamber of Commerce, of course, marketing and development, economic development, and guidance from them from start to finish. As far as IT is concerned, you know, we have what we call real Woodstock. I don't know if anybody knows, but that costs over almost a million and a half dollars. Does anybody know what real Woodstock is?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And has it helped? We have an IT department within our city schools. They can design a logo without having a consultant. They can design websites. They'd love to, yeah, they'd love to work with the city to identify problems and come up with solutions, and they have the ability and the resources.
Thank you, Mark. It's time for us to move into the final arguments. Two minutes to convince the jury out here. We started in alphabetical order. Let's go, we'll finish in reverse alphabetical order, so.
You're up again, Natalie.
Natalie?
Gladly.
You again.
Thank you, Larry. I don't want to, nor will I speak for the other candidates on the panel with me tonight, but from my heart, I say this. This is awesome. This is what it's all about, just being here together, hearing from one another, learning about what each brings as a potential leader on council, and it's really exciting. The two women currently on council, Wendy and Lisa, are not running for council. They did not seek reelection, and I believe strongly in representation, and I felt very strongly and very compelled to run. In closing, I will let some of my closest friends and family members and even just acquaintances speak via their messages to me recently. From a woman named Mary Sue, I'm so very proud of your candidacy. I know you love civic engagement, and you are very passionate about it and Woodstock. Awesome to see you take your first step in this bright future for you. I just want you to know, I'm thinking of you and sending positive vibes. We may not agree on everything, but that's what it's all about. Keep on keeping on. And from Barbara Puchkowski, whose son I taught at St. Patrick High School, Missy Yumba taught my middle son. Awesome teacher, awesome human being. From Melissa McGlynn, former student at Notre Dame High School for Girls, Missy Yumba was literally one of my favorite women on the planet, and now she's out here doing this whole darn thing as a candidate? I'm so excited for this. From my friend Jenny, I donated to the bright light in this town. You. I'm cheering on your win. Finally, from Nick Aravalo, a former student at St. Pat's, I saw you running for office, and it makes me so happy to hear. To this day, I bring you up every chance I get as one of the people that redirected my course. You're the teacher I remember lighting up my mind with endless ideas, and the craziest thing is that your inspiration never, ever let up. I'm proud to say you were my teacher, that I was able to learn from you, and I'm so grateful to still see you shine so bright. And in conclusion, let me tell you, I bring that brightness, that shine, and that sparkle to city council. Thank you.
Tom West.
I'll, I'll make this short and sweet. If you elect me Tom West, Thomas West on the ballot, I don't know why it's different. Here's what you can count on. A populist perspective, a commitment to public spaces that are inclusive of the needs of community residents, a focus on protecting what Woodstock has built over the years instead of unfettered, thoughtless development, and a dedication to preserving our parks, forests, and habitats. And also developing, I put this as an addendum, bike paths and better public transportation, because I think those are necessary as well. Oh, and I would like to mention, for anyone who feels like my point of view is in alignment with your own interests, please reach out to me. You can get ahold of my email, which I think is printed in the, in the Woodstock Independent. I'd love to have your support, and I have a few signs that are looking for a lawn to live on, or several lawns, as the case may be.
Joe Starzinski.
Well, I first thank you, Chamber, for doing this. It's pretty cool that there are, I mean, I know every, not everybody's here, but that we have seven people actually trying to, as opposed to, you know, when you have, you know, open seats that are, are non-contested, right? So, it's really good thing that we have a lot of people, and these are all good candidates. These are, and the discussion and the dialogue is really good, instead of not having any, you know, here's the choice and that's it, just check off the box. So, I really think that's good. I'm going to live here in Woodstock for quite a long time, as long as I'm going to probably be on this planet, so I would love to continue to serve. Thank you.
Melissa McMahon.
In closing, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Chamber and the Opera House for hosting the event and for Larry for moderating it. Having the opportunity to share our feelings on matters that make a difference to our community is important. Hearing, having you hear our voices is important. I am nothing but an open book. Most everybody here is, you know, knows where I live. Stop by. But if you have, you need a deeper explanation, you want to further converse, please reach out. I'm Facebook, Melissa McMahon for City Council, Woodstock, Illinois. Stop me at the grocery store, knock on my window at car drop-off, you know, school pickup, drop-off, and you know exactly where I'll be at approximately 7:07, February 2nd of every year. I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for being brave and selfless. This is not an easy thing to do. The fact that we have nine people willing to give of their, give their all for the city is amazing and a show of democracy at work. I'm excited for our future and hope the next time we do have a more diverse turnout to reflect the beautiful melting pot that is Woodstock, people of color, different cultures, please. please. If we can do this, you can do this. I do want to take a minute to thank my family. Many of you know my youngest, Charlotte. She chose not to come tonight. At 12 years old, she jokes that she has been to more city council and committee meetings than people three times her age, and she has. I'm raising the next generation to give back to Woodstock. I'd like to thank my friends, the mentors, the supporters, for your thoughtful conversations, learning, and energizing my desire to play my part in Woodstock. When it comes down to it, the voters have nine candidates to choose from to fill three seats. I believe I'd be a good choice, as does each of us up here. But it's up to our residents to choose, not just for yourselves in the here and now, but also for your children and future generations. Choices made today will shape our future as we grow and prosper. So vote for me, and I promise I will continue to show up for Woodstock.
Mark Endic, two minutes.
As I mentioned before, I've had 45 years' experience as a successful businessperson. What I bring to the city council is fiscal responsibility. I am not in favor of large government. I believe that what we should spend what is necessary and keep an eye constantly on the bottom line. I want to emphasize and encourage clean energy, investigate reliable, convenient, and affordable transportation. I am not anti-development, but our infrastructure must be in place before we consider going forward with large-scale development. I'll give you a case in point, for example, and I'll be quick. Our police department has 39 officers. They have to cover 42 shifts a week. That means three shifts are not covered or one officer is on patrol during those shifts. So we have to fund our police department and public works. I have a good working cordial relationship with all city departments, being on the Transportation Commission, being involved with all our, not all, but most of our civic organizations, and we work together. So you won't need to get me, they won't need to, I can't speak yet. I don't have to be indoctrinated. They know who I am, they know what I want, and they know what I'd like to be. I'd like to eliminate consulting fees. I think that, again, we can not spend what we don't have. This is our money, not the city's money, and I want to be there to be able to make sure that it's spent correctly, wisely, and what's necessary.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, one more, one more. You know, my wife tells me that what I would bring to the city council is a cordial dissent. And what she told me was that if I speak softly, people will listen.
Darren Flynn.
First off, I would like to very much thank the Chamber of Commerce and for all of you for showing up tonight. I would really like the opportunity to continue over the next four years, to be able to see some things through that we've started. And it's one of those things that, you know, that not everyone agrees with everything, and I get it, but you hope that it serves the greater good in the end. And so one of the big things that I've been very much behind, and I have pushed city staff that's probably here, in talking about the importance of a comprehensive plan with measurable results, being able to understand where do we want to go and how do we measure our progress along the way, not as a matter to punish, but also to help commissions, to help us as council members make decisions and make sure that we're on course for where we want to be. And it's a living document, something that changes with time. We haven't had that in the past, and we've missed two housing bubbles, in a sense, because we didn't have it ready before it needed to be ready. And that was an opportunity for us to be strategic and grow. A master arts plan, you know, my fellow council member, Wendy Pierceall, on the Arts Commission, very big proponent of the arts, as am I. We started with the city mural, we have other art objects, but we started with the city mural, and we have the potential to do so much more, but we need to have that plan and what's our guidance and what do you want to be. Master parks plan, looking at what do we want to do with our parks and making sure that we're doing the right thing, and it's for the future, and it's really planned, and it's sustainable, and that we can move forward and grow with it. I think the other thing is really pushing and questioning, that's great, how do we pay for it next? Looking at, Bryce brought up the streets and everything. My question at many council meetings have been like, great, we're taking care of, it was 75% due to cost, it is now 60, maybe 50% because of rising costs. What are we doing to preserve the streets we're spending $60 million on, and how do we fix the other 40 to 25%? So that's what I promise that I'll do in the next four years, if you choose me.
Bryce and Calvin, to close.
Thank you very much to the Chamber, and thank you to all of you out there in the seats that took your time to come out here and witness us. Going back to my introduction, my focal points for running were to include roads, recreation, and innovation. Now, in terms of recreation, us as a community as a whole, we need to prioritize our health and our wellness, and that curtails into my closing, saying that our most important investment resource ultimately for our collective future is our children. That means safe places to play, recreational opportunities, quality schools, sidewalks, and roads, and an atmosphere where they can imagine and grow into the next generation of leaders. My promise to you, the citizens of Woodstock, is to bring an even keeled approach to all issues, temper my decision-making with wisdom, and remain strong in my convictions on the decisions this council makes going forward. I will forever defend a person's right to voice their stance or opinion on any issue, regardless of whether I agree with it. Woodstock needs to remain a welcoming community that is always working to improve on its embrace of our cultural, ethnic, and biological differences. This is my vision, and I would be humbled to have your vote for Woodstock City Council.
It's eight o'clock. Thank you to the candidates. And thank you to the audience for being reasonably well-behaved. The Woodstock Independent Voters Guide today has contact information for all of the candidates, so if your question didn't get asked tonight, you can ask them directly through their email. I appreciate you being here, and be safe.
Thanks, Larry.